Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board of June 28, 2016. My name is Marty Atkins, I'm the chairman. To my left, the vice chair, Mr. Guevez. Fourth in, Mr. Stowe Bryan, Mr. Chin, Mr. Ray Delve. My name is Mr. Ray Delve, the head of inspection and services. Mr. Duca, to my right, the clerk, Mr. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or a pager, would you please put it on silent or vibrate so you don't interrupt the meeting? If anyone's gonna testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If anyone's gonna testify or think you might testify. If you think you might testify. Guevez.
You swear to tell the truth, I'm not sure if that's about the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Are you gonna motion wave the reading in a minute?
Mr. Chairman, you made the motion to waive the reading of the minutes, we're in 14 meetings. Jacka.
On the motion, stand on our favor.
Aye.
Close, no more. Under new business, case number 16038, New Creek LLC for special permit varies. It's a drive-through window under Dunkin' Donuts business, 550 Adams Street. Yep, and the representative here, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. I'm caught off guard, because usually when I'm on first, you kick me to the end of the list, so...
But, I just figured you'd get paid more than that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. For the record, my name is Evan Fleming, I'm here on behalf of New Creek LLC. With me tonight is Chris O'Mello of Kimco, who is the owner, representative, and representative here tonight. New Creek LLC was the entity in this particular title to this particular retail plaza, as they did in other plazas as well. I'm also joined by Vinod Kellner.
Howdy, here.
And also Jocelyn Mader, both from BHB. Vinod will talk about the traffic related matters in more detail today, and the analysis of the parking, and the analysis of the queue, in both preparation of the plans that are being presented tonight, and also in response to concerns that were raised by the city councilor, as this board may see, and other neighbors in the area. Just, if I may, take a couple of minutes and give you a little bit of background. I'm sure that you're very familiar with the site. The site is located at 550 Hancock Street, otherwise known as the Adams Plaza, or if you want to call it the Walgreens Plaza, which is located on Adams Street. It's a 2.66 acre parcel of land. It's improved by a commercial retail plaza, which consists of five retail businesses now, including the Walgreens Pharmacy, which is the largest tenant in the building, NSYNC Studio for the Arts, formerly Unchained Pizza, and the UPS Store, as well as the Dunkin' Donuts facility. Dunkin' Donuts operated from the facility for a number of years without a drive-through, as is probably well aware. The property is located in the business, the zoning district, so the retail use of this particular location is allowed by law. What brings us here tonight is a request for a special permit for drive-through. A number of years ago, the city council felt as though there needed to be a level of review for any drive-through proposals, even though retail businesses were allowed as a matter of right, and they put in, as part of the ordinance, that the zoning board appeals would be the special permit granting authority for all drive-through facilities. And that included the TD Bank next door, and any other facilities that maintain a drive-through. As you are well aware as well, during the winter of 2015, in our wonderful snowstorms that we suffered through, day after day after day, this building suffered from that as well, and the accumulation of snow on the roof of the building caused a portion of the buildings to collapse. And that housed, at the time, the UPS Store, the Unchained Pizza, and the Dunkin' Donuts facility in that three-unit addition to the plaza on the Walgreens side. Kimco then was in the process of rebuilding that through insurance claims and other things, and has now rebuilt that section of the plaza. And in doing so, they began discussions with the tenants about the reuse of some of those sites, and approached Dunkin' Donuts about interest in moving to a different location within that three-street plaza. Normally, the UPS Store, as you probably know, was located closest to NSYNC Studio for the Arts. Dunkin' Donuts was located in the middle facility, and then Unchained Pizza was on the end cap. And in discussions with the tenants, it was understood to agree that Dunkin' Donuts would move to the end cap unit. And it gave, the collapse of the building and the rebuild, gave a perfect opportunity to look at maybe a better way to utilize that facility. And that hence led to the negotiations of the drive-through facility for that location. So that's what brings us here tonight. The parking lot, by the way, has approximately 129 vehicles. And I've visited that plaza a number of times, as many of you probably do as well. And very rarely, as ever, have I ever seen that park, many of those spaces being utilized. And Vinod will talk about the analysis that was done on the use of the parking lot. Because, quite frankly, it's overparked at 129 units, or 129 vehicles. And this will be some modifications to the parking lot as part of this plan. So the petitioner is requesting a special permit from this board in accordance with Title 17, Section 9.4, to permit the construction of a drive-through window to serve the Dunkin' Donuts building which will be moved to the end cap retail unit. The parking lot, as such, will be redesigned, but not rebuilt. Redesigned as it services that particular unit at the end. Much of that parking was very underutilized, in fact, not used at all oftentimes, because it's furthest away from the retail users. So that, in redesigning the parking lot, that section of the building, or at the end cap unit, will be, parking lot, will be redesigned and designated as employee parking only. So all the employees from the plaza will be required to park in that location, which is furthest away from the retail units. And so that the remaining portion of the parking lot remains free and available to the customers of the remaining users. We went through a number of different discussions with the city in designing the drive-through queue, and the drive-through as it stands today. And those discussions included meetings with Mr. Duca, meetings and discussions with the city's traffic engineer, meetings and discussions with the former planning director, Dennis Harrington. And during those discussions, a number of different options were reviewed. Vinod will talk about one of the, two of the, oh, two of the options. One, the present option that we're gonna discuss tonight, or proposing tonight, and another option that was, that we decided not to move forward with, and he'll explain why. There were a couple of different ways to use, to house a drive-through, however, and those are fully explored. The whole purpose of those discussions and the analysis was to ensure that there would be no impact of backup onto Adams Street or into the driveway of the plaza, so that it would provide the longest queue possible for the drive-through, and there would be no interference with the use of the plaza parking lot, and no backup or disturbance to Adams Street, which is a busy street during the morning hours and after during the evening hours, and no backup into the entryway. In that new parking area, there will be signage provided that requires that those spaces be utilized by employees and employees only. And the remaining areas will, and there will be signage in that separated parking lot. As I indicated, there was a past review that Vinod will talk about, about the use of the driveway parking, or the parking lot itself. Although this has an impact on the number of spaces that will be provided in the entire parking lot, it's a minimal impact, that Vinod will talk about, and still will provide adequate, or even more than adequate parking for the plaza as it stands today. As I indicated, this was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer, Debbie Finnegan, who provided, what was, also the comment letter. Vinod and his team reviewed the comment letter, made some changes, and responded to the questions that she raised. And we believe that the proposal, as is being presented tonight, will adequately address the concerns that were raised. After filing, we, and by the way, I reached out to Councilor Palmucci a number of months ago, and we talked about the possibility of an neighborhood meeting. It was decided that an neighborhood meeting was not gonna be held, so we did not have an neighborhood meeting. And I did note, and as I received from Noreen, the letter from Councilor Palmucci, and letters from a couple of neighbors in the area, raising concerns primarily about the additional traffic and the backup of the queue onto the Adams Street intersection. And interestingly, Councilor Palmucci raised two different sites in Quincy, Dunkin' Donuts sites at that. One was the Franklin Street Dunkin' Donuts, and the second was the Center Street Dunkin' Donuts, which I think we all know are probably the two worst drive-through situations at Dunkin' Donuts in the city of Quincy. And so what we asked Vinod to do, and he did, is he went out and reviewed those particular sites, and he'll speak to those as well, about the average queue that exists in those Dunkin' Donuts facilities, and the problems that occur at those facilities, and why, which are far different than the existing conditions of this site, as the site provides adequate land within the parking lot itself, but also within the queue that we're proposing tonight. So, without anything more from me, although I'm here to answer any questions and concerns, I'd like Vinod to make a presentation on the traffic related.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Vinod Kalikiri, I'm a traffic engineer with the BHB. I'm a professional engineer, licensed professional traffic operations engineer with over 20 years of experience, licensed practice, traffic and transportation engineering, and planning in Massachusetts. Address? I'm with BHB. The address is 101 Wallenex Street, Watertown, 86th, 02471. So as Ed introduced the project, he mentioned that you've been looking at this from a traffic flow and operate. BHB has been doing the site civil design on the project, landscape design, as well as traffic analysis for the project for quite some time. In fact, I've been looking at this site for more than a year at this point. After the roof collapsed and deliberations started on how best to reconstruct and utilize the plaza, BHB was brought in. There were some iterations of site layout that were done before BHB got involved, and those were reviewed with some planning staff in the city. And the feedback from that process was that there was a need for a traffic engineer to be on the team so that, you know, we could review the operations and the impacts of the proposal. And that's how BHB originally got involved. As Ed mentioned, we're talking about Adams Plaza. That's probably the Adams Street, as you know, that's Adams Street heading towards 93 in that direction. It's a municipal parquet right there, it's a signalized intersection. There's the TD Bank located right there. And then the current conditions, and before the roof collapsed, Walgreens was right there. And then you've got the dance studio, the UPS Store, the Dunkin' Donuts in the middle, and then the pizza store on the end cap. So that was the existing layout, with approximately 129 parking spaces within the plaza. So that's the existing current conditions. The site is served by a single curb pad, as you can see, one lane to entry, one lane exit. It's a pretty wide driveway, it's over 30 feet wide. But it's striped and signed to operate as a single lane in each direction. On Adams Street, there's essentially for through-traffic, there's one lane. This is essentially not this kind of pointing in that direction, right in the middle of the municipal parquet in Adams Street. So I would recall, Adams Street has generally eastbound in that direction, heading towards the signal, and heading towards 93 would be westbound Adams Street. So the eastbound Adams Street approach has one lane with a wide shoulder, bicycle lane that's been striped. And then the westbound has one through-lane varying with bicycle lane on the right side, and a left turn pocket, a left turn lane that provides access to Adams Plaza. A few years ago, that was not the configuration. The left turn lane did not exist, there were multiple lanes on Adams Street, and that was causing a lot of conditions, speeding issues, things of that nature. And my understanding, talking to some of the city staff, was that that was modified. The lane configuration was modified to help reduce the speeds, and also promote multimodal transportation, bicycles and transit. So you have one lane in each direction, and a left turn pocket entering the site. There's only one curb pad for the plaza, it's located right there. That's the driveway for the TD Bank. I'll get into a lot more detail with this plan, but this is sort of an overview of the proposal. As Ed mentioned, the parking lot here will be reconfigured, the existing parking lot. It's just wide open parking lot, you come in and make a left turn immediately into this parking lot. This area, when Dunkin' Donuts was still in operation, was quite often used for staging delivery vehicles. Small box trucks would park there, and then supplies would be carried to the stores. This area, not usually utilized to parking, right in front of Walgreens, right in the city, it's usually the prime parking within the plaza. Again, the proposal is modified, the layout right there. Majority of the parking lot remaining, plaza parking lot, will remain the same. The parking here will be reconfigured, a tri- through-lane added, and then there are some lane changes that are proposed on the driveway. And again, I won't get into a lot of the specifics on some of that, the graphics, but the key element here is that the drive-through lane would pass through an employee-only parking lot. So this area of the parking here will be designated for employees only. I'll give you details of why that is. Again, this has evolved, this plan has evolved over the last year, year and a few months that I've been involved in the review, that various iterations worked with city staff, preliminarily to ensure that the design accommodates, addresses the comments that we've heard as we go through the process. Just to give you a brief overview of the traffic study itself, the May 2016 study that's been included as part of the application. I would kind of break it into essentially three buckets of information. You have an existing conditions review, where you see a lot of data, traffic bands, speeds, parking supply, crash barriers, tight lines, queuing information. So there's a lot of data about what's happening out there today. There's also information about the roadway geometry, the lane configuration, how many lanes you have, paths here, those lanes, things of that nature. The second aspect of the study deals with an analysis of those conditions. So given those parameters of volumes, crashes, tight lines, queuing that exist today, how does the roadway system work, and how does the plaza work in relation to those traffic metrics in the area? So that's our second condition. And then, within that second bucket of information, if you would, we look at two scenarios. There's an analysis without the drive-through, which is essentially a, you know, a by-rank condition, if you would, because if nothing were to happen, you would have a Dunkin' Donuts without a drive-through. And then there is the proposal, which is the Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. So there's two sets, essentially, there are three sets of analysis. The current conditions with no Dunkin' Donuts. A condition in the future with, without a drive-through, but with a regular, a walk-in Dunkin' Donuts. And then a third scenario, which is analysis of Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. And then the last set of analysis, which towards the end of the document, you will see a lot of information about parking analysis, drive-through operations, and how we incorporate all that information into the site layout that's presented on the plan. This is assuming, assuming of the existing conditions and the existing access there, and then the surface parking lot on this end, which is primarily the area that would be modifying as part of this plan, 129 parking spaces. Again, the plan would be to modify the parking here in total. The 129 parking spaces would be eliminated, this plan involves an elimination of about 13 parking spaces. So there will be a total of about 116 spaces after this improvement is implemented, with about 18 spaces located within this area that's going to be designated as an employee parking lot. Obviously, employees can park in other areas of parking lot farther away from the stores, but this area would be designated as an employee-only parking lot, with the primary goal of reducing the turnover. So if you had active customer parking in there with cars pulling in and out of those spaces, the concern we heard from the city staff was how would the drive-through operations work if cars quickly pulling in and out. So, again, given that it's 18 spaces and well-defined design and monitoring and control, decided to designate that as an employee parking space, parking lot. So the turnover of those spaces would be substantially lower. Employees would come in, park, and then they would stay there for that type of shift. And when you look at, again, from the point of view of Dunkin' Donuts, the peak time for Dunkin' Donuts, as you imagine, is early in the morning. So our traffic bands, we looked at three sets of data, we looked at early morning peak times, so 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., which is typically where you see the majority of the operations associated with Dunkin' Donuts. We also looked at the evening peak time, which is a peak that corresponds to the peak of the entire plaza. So the Dunkin' Donuts itself would not have as much traffic as the morning peak time would, but then the rest of the plaza would be in operation, Walgreens, and the other stores, pizza place, the dance room. So we looked at an evening peak time. And then from a parking and circulation point of view, we also looked at a Saturday midday condition, because I think Saturday would be a peak time for parking. So we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we had, we looked at parking operations on a Saturday midday during the peak time, so that any change of direction in parking is not going to seriously impact operations of the plaza. So one of the key things that Ed mentioned, that's come out even during some of the early comment letters that we have received, was about the impact of the drive-through queue, and what it does to the operations of the plaza, what it might do to the operations of Adams Street. That was, I would say, the first and foremost item that we looked at as part of the analysis. We looked at early on, let's say 14 months ago, when we started looking at the design. But based on the feedback that Center Street and Franklin Street were two kind of drive-through operations in the city, and kind of how do those two locations operate now? What happens with the queues with the drive-through operations? And how that might correlate to what we've applied here? So we looked at both locations. This little map that you see here is the Center Street Dunkin' Donuts, right there. That's Center Street, that's the group three interchange, the train station, that's the Alvin Car Service Place that you see there with the red roof. And then here, right here, is the Franklin Street Dunkin' Donuts. Franklin Street heading essentially north-south with the drive-through lane that goes around, drive-through windows on this side. As you can see, the stacking here is much larger than the stacking that's available at the Center Street Dunkin' Donuts. This site currently has capacity for about four to five cars for the stacking. Before, those cars still back, aren't the Center Street. And again, we have observed, based on our monitoring, we had engineers out there during those morning peak times to observe the queues, and very frequently, those five-carat queues are exceeded. And you see queuing on Center Street, you see queuing on Franklin Street. And quite often, people get frustrated when they see the queues filling up right. They can't get into the parking lot, and they end up parking on the street, just running back past you. And we have monitored the queues, how many people actually park on the street and run into the store just because they can't get into a parking lot after the state of convenience. Typically, from a traffic engineering point of view, when you look at drive-through operations for Dunkin' Donuts, and it's closely tied into the operation, the processing speed of the facility itself. So Dunkin' Donuts has certain parameters on how quickly they can process, how they should process customers as they travel to the drive, there are certain metrics. So that defines the processing speed of the window. So independent of the volume of traffic that you have in the area, it's constrained by the number of cars the people in the store can process, and that's all standardized, the way Dunkin' Donuts operates, and how their floor plan is laid out, and how their model works. And typically, on an average, you see an average queue ranging somewhere in the order of nine to 10 cars. If you're looking at an extended period of time, and you monitor all the queues, and you take an average of all those queues, it's about nine to 10 cars. The maximum queues typically, from a design point of view, would be somewhere in the order of 13 cars. That's what you typically expect to see at a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. Again, that is controlled from that point by the processing speed at the window, and also the model of plan, customers are expected to wait. You know, if you're sitting in a queue that's longer than 13, 14, or 15 cars, you're not going to add to the back of the queue, you're going to, as you may, be as from Franklin Street, would park on the street, if you can't get into the lot and walk into the store. After a certain point, customers would choose to just park and walk into the store rather than add to a 13 or 14-carat queue. So typically, you would see the maximum queues in the order of about 13 cars. I know this is a lot of data, but the intent of this graphic, again, this is the queue measurements at Franklin Street. These are the queue measurements at Center Street. The bottom axis represents 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. The peak time generally for this area is somewhere between 7:15, 7:30, for about an hour or so, when you see the peaks, spikes, and traffic toward one. And then the number on the Y-axis represents the number of cars in the queue. And you will see that on Franklin Street, there's definitely a spike in traffic just around that 8:00 a.m. timeframe, and then it kind of appears out towards the end of the observation period. Again, the queues down at the end are about four to six. The maximum in this case, in a couple of instances, gets up to 16 cars. And then our staff actually observed that people were just parking on the street, they're walking in because they can't sit in those queues for too long. At Center Street, you see that there are actually a series of spikes in the curve, and this is likely tied to the train station, right in the store. So we have a train station, people trying to stop by, grab a coffee before they go and park at the station and grab the train. And you see that there's one instance where the queue gets up to 14 cars. There are only five cars maybe that you can stack in the parking lot before those queues fill up, and additional 90, 10 cars, that people see as they're driving through that area. And yes, that is, that is an issue when you have a drive-through that's social. From a design point of view, when you have this much data to work with, you look at a metric called the 80/50 percentile. It's a statistical number that's used for design purposes when you're a traffic engineer. And based on the Franklin Street drive-through numbers, the 80/50 percentile number is about 14 cars. That's what you would use for design purposes. If you were based on Center Street number, you'd base it on a statistical design number of about 11 cars. We are using a design queue of 13 cars on the plan. And I won't point out one thing as to what 13 cars means. 13 cars is toward that point, if you start stacking cars right from there as they enter the employee parking lot, and they wrap around to here, and come up to the window. That's 13 cars. And you have an additional six to seven cars outside within the plaza itself, so which is about 20 cars before you actually go out on the path. So there's more than adequate stacking within the plaza to accommodate any of those peak queues that you would expect. And in general, again, after about 13 or 14 cars, you would tend to see people park in the spaces and just walk into the street, not necessarily sit in a queue that's longer and wait for 20 minutes or longer, trying to get processed. So, early on, before BHB got involved, there was a proposal that was put in front of the planning staff, and the design intent, this is a sketch of that graphic, that showed a drive-through lane that cuts in right after you come in from the entrance. So you would come in to the plaza, and then you turn into this parking area, and then get into the drive-through lane, and then you exit. This here is... This here is thirteen cars. And the concern that was expressed by the planning staff was that that's not adequate stacking. The thirteenth car actually is blocking the driveway. It's going to have an issue with cars entering and exiting the plaza. Two or three more cars on an occasion that would quickly spill back into Adams Street. So that was the very early plan that we looked at. Again, the concern was the potential for queue spillback onto Adams Street from the drive-through window. And then the plan that you have now that shows the employee parking lot with the drive-through queue of thirteen cars, that's the theoretical maximum that we're designing for, plus an additional seven cars or so that can be accommodated on the plaza and of course, all the parking that you have within the plaza for people who choose to just park and walk into the store. So the queue is entirely contained within the plaza. The employee parking lot, the slot is restricted to employees only to minimize the interaction between the drive-through queue and the cars pulling in and out of those spaces. And another critical component of the design today is only one lane coming out. So if there is a car waiting to turn left at this intersection at the driveway and they're waiting for a cab to make a left turn, you're going to get stuck behind that waiting cab. So the design is to modify the driveway. You can actually see that the driveway geometry has been modified to create separate right and left turn lanes. So that when you do have a few cars that need to make that left turn, you have a separate right turn pocket that would help vehicles leave the site without causing unnecessary backup to the property all at the same time keeping the operations here at a stop control intersection. So in terms of parking, I do want to mention, I mentioned that we'll be losing approximately thirteen parking spaces within the plaza as part of this plan. We looked at operations currently as it stands today with the Dunkin' Donuts and then we'll look into the future conditions with the drive-through. The peak parking demand for this plaza is about eighty to eighty-five cars. The total existed is one hundred and twenty-nine spaces. And with these changes, it'll be about one hundred and sixteen spaces. So it's like that it would be more than adequate parking. In fact, during that morning peak time, which is really the peak time for Dunkin' Donuts, the parking demand within this plaza with Dunkin' Donuts in operation is somewhere in the order of about fifty to sixty cars. So during the peak time in the morning, you only get approximately sixty cars in the plaza. It would be that Saturday midday peak conditions when you get into those eighty, eighty-five, ninety cars in the plaza. So that is a quick overview of the traffic study. I know there's a lot of information in the study and what it presented just now. And this has a site showing what was submitted as part of the package. If there's anything specific that you would like to ask or clarify, we will address that. Thank you.
Is there a card access for the employees to get into that site?
No, there will be signs posted right here that says employee parking only. And then it will be monitored by the plaza to ensure that non-employee vehicles would not be parked in there. But there would be no card access for this lot. And again, that becomes an issue primarily during that morning peak time for an hour, maybe seven to eight AM. At seven in the evening, you know, you're probably not going to experience those thirteen-car queues. So you may have one or two cars that are trying to get through. When you look at some of the data that we presented, the evening peak queues are no more than four cars. So even at Franklin Street and Center Street. So you're not going to have an issue with parking in this lot during other times.
Any other questions?
Deliveries to those three stores, how is it a nipple with a nice piece of green brass cabinet?
You know, Dunkin' Donuts truck pulls in, but right front of that store, the window front door.
So the deliveries were right here within this.
Right back in the shop.
Do you like that?
I used to run a shop like that as well.
That's pretty standard. The deliveries are dealt with prior to working hours of other facilities. And I believe that that's how the deliveries have been done even previous to this.
The testimony was that they used that, well, it's not the employee parking lot, to put their trucks. And I assume they have backdoors.
They go in because you don't want the workers following customers.
I'm not sure on deliveries. I thought deliveries, I thought we were advised that deliveries were actually made at the front entrance of that store. I'm not sure where they were back deliveries. Were they backdoor deliveries?
No, they were front.
They were done at the front.
Really?
Same way as they'll be done today. The question, though, I guess, is would the truck have, with the trucking lot empty, would it have the facility to enter into that side?
Right, those stores, you don't even know the tenant is.
We go in the front.
And Volker's has a back. So we don't even know that the tenant is. It says tenant. I don't know who did this kind of thing.
That was formerly a UPS store. I believe that, I believe that the tenants to be in place, I don't know if that's public knowledge at this stage. But it's going to be a. The question was asked about the tenant in the other unit where the UPS store formerly occupied.
We can really both into like a.
Well, you know, it doesn't really matter because it's a five-year lease, ten-year lease, it's going to be all the people there.
Right, it would be a retail type tenant.
But the point is.
Oh, I'm just surprised that there's no delivery place, no backdoor. It wasn't from the existing facility. There were limitations on the rebuilds that were provided because it was a non-conformity building. It had to be rebuilt as it stood prior to the collapse. And that's why they were limited in having to rebuild it as it was done.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of them.
Start Ryan.
The pocket, the left turn pocket on Adams Street, as you can tell, how many cars stack in there?
So the available storage is probably, I mean, it does come all the way down to the median. I would say it probably can store about four to five cars in that area. And actually, that stacking is actually used by both Adams Plaza and the bank.
Okay, next question.
It extends past the bank driveway.
Okay. Now, with the build-out and the installation of the drive-up, did you, how much of that traffic would go left on Adams Street at peak times coming out of the plaza?
Again, the split, so Dunkin' Donuts traffic, as you can imagine, is primarily driven by pass-by traffic, right? I mean, if you're, majority of, obviously, there are some people who may want to just go to Dunkin' Donuts and go back home. But majority of the traffic is people on their way to work in the morning who would pull into the plaza. So if they're heading towards ninety-three, coming from the signal, they would turn in, pick up a coffee, and then you would make a left turn and head out. When you look at the data that's presented in the traffic study, I believe it's about a forty-sixty split, forty percent oriented towards the right and about sixty percent oriented to the left.
A peak in the morning?
During the morning. For overall plaza traffic, I mean, again, it's not just, you know, there's a certain, at a certain point, Walgreens opens up. So there is some Walgreens-related traffic mixed in there. We wouldn't be able to distinguish, you know, a Walgreens car from a Dunkin' Donuts walk-in vehicle before the collapse of that drive-through. Then it's about a forty to sixty percent split.
One more question. Will all employees from all the stores in there be allowed to pack in the parking lot? Or is it just the three that you built?
The operational arrangement for those eighteen spaces is yet to be defined. It will be employee parking only. And how that will be divided up between employees of this plaza, we have yet to figure that out. This is the mechanics of that arrangement, this is what they're. The intent is to make sure that it's low turnover, so you don't have cars pulling in and out frequently out of those spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Mr. Jerry, I have two more questions. How many employees are there in the plaza? Jerry, speaking up today.
I wouldn't know. So our analysis, again, the future conditions is based on Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national standard that reviews the number of vehicle trips. So the vehicle trips, the total number of vehicles that we would account for, we don't distinguish between employee vehicles and customer vehicles for the purpose of analysis, capacity analysis. So for parking, it does make sense. I'm sure you're conready. Right here, or you can hear from how many employees there are.
But the remaining parking lot is also available to them. The goal is just to limit that to employees only to avoid the turnover.
But it's not that there will be only eighteen employee parking places, that's not the intention.
Have you addressed the concern about the westbound traffic in the morning taking that left across eastbound traffic into the Dunkin' Donuts in the morning and across, you know, here type of traffic? It's like in a queue within a pocket.
Right, so when you, yes, so when you look at the data, you will see that there's actually queuing analysis that shows how often the eastbound queue blocks the driveway during the morning rush hours, how often it blocks the driveway during the evening rush hours. So that is part of the analysis we do out there. Again, the metric here, the comparison is with and without a Dunkin' Donuts. It's not about whether or not a Dunkin' Donuts can go in there. So when you look at a Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through, the primary reason for the drive-through is a convenience factor. So when you look at operations of Dunkin' Donuts before and after a store puts in a drive-through, you see that a certain percentage of the walk-in customers will switch to the drive-through for convenience. And then once the queue gets to a certain level, thirteen, fourteen cars, then they'll continue to do what they're doing before the drive-through enters. So it's not necessarily that, it's not necessary that adding a drive-through automatically causes a huge bump in traffic. There could be an attraction factor associated with it. And we, that can be followed with an increase in traffic flow for analysis purposes. But the primary shift you would see with the drive-through is that some of the walk-in customers will in the future be in the drive-through. So that's really the change that you will see, not as much on Adams Street.
And the only other point that I was going to raise as well is that although this site doesn't benefit for a light out front in the drive, it does benefit from a light on furnished parking, which is a very close distance to that, which causes the stoppage of traffic that allows break in the traffic for cars to exit the plaza. And that happens at a regular basis. I mean, furnished parking is a relatively busy intersection, certainly in the morning hours with the school in session. So that there is a regular stoppage that allows vehicles to exit.
In the westbound side of Adams Street, why not do a company?
It is strive for that. And in fact, again, when you look at some of the data in there, which I was actually surprised. But then when you look at the regional network with ninety-three located to the top of the screen, the majority of the queues and the blocking of the driveway you observed is during the evening time when people are coming back home. Obviously, there are queues in the morning as well when people are heading east. But a lot of the traffic in the morning is headed towards ninety-three. So the time when you see this blockage the most, when you look at the data and it happens quite frequently, is during the afternoon or the evening rush hour, which is, you know, sometimes between four-thirty, five-thirty, five to six thirty. That's when you see the queuing issues the most.
William?
I was trying to follow along with some of the traffic study numbers that are in here. What, because you studied this model when these three storefronts are currently closed. What percentage increase have you attributed towards not only Dunkin' Donuts opening, but also the other two storefronts open?
So again, I mentioned the Institute of Transportation. In the entire plaza, it's a twenty-four thousand-plus square feet of free convenience on the plaza currently with the Dunkin' Donuts, direct drive-through. So there are national statistics that you can use to estimate the volume of traffic that at twenty-four thousand square foot plaza excluding the Dunkin' Donuts. So that would be about, let's say, twenty-three thousand, twenty-two thousand, something. You can estimate the total traffic for that. So we would put that in the future and reduce without the drive-through. So there is an estimated traffic count associated with the vacant portion of the plaza that's not in operation today. And that's part of the standard analysis and that's based on national statistics.
So then what percentage do you attribute to an increase based on a drive-through versus not having a drive-through?
So when you look, again, this is, when you look at those national statistics, Dunkin' Donuts or coffee shop with a drive-through is the land use that's defined in these national statistics. And obviously, that Dunkin' Donuts would fit that criteria. When you look at the data before or with or without drive-through, you'll see that the numbers are not much different. So what we did.
But not much, what is there associated with that?
Just a few cars, it's a few additional trips. I mean, I'd say less than ten trips difference between with and without drive-through. But for analysis purposes, what we did, again, this is based on historically what we have done with drive-through analysis, is assume a fifteen percent bump in traffic.
So that's what I was trying to figure out, was that fifteen?
So there's a fifteen percent bump. And again, if you look at the national statistics, it will say that it's much lower than that, almost bordering on less than one percent. But we used a fifteen percent to make sure that our design is conservative enough that the queues don't spill back on that.
So based on these, maybe fifteen national trips per hour? Is that what this data shows? I mean, it's very vague. It said weekday morning, enter an exit. You said you have that Dunkin' Donuts will contribute sixty-six trips on a weekday morning. I'm wondering if that's per ten minutes, so.
So when you look at, yeah, if you look at table three, so when you look at the table three, the Nobel, what you call as the Nobel traffic condition. So you would have a total of sixty-seven vehicle trips in and out during that peak time, okay? And then with the drive-through.
Right, that's a peak hour.
Then with the drive-through, with the fifteen percent bump and, you know, the assumed fifteen percent increase, that would go up to ninety-seven trips. This represents an increase of thirty vehicle trips. Again, I would say that that's a conservatively worst case. It's twenty-four and B, a fifteen percent, but we use that for analysis purposes.
Now, sir, Mr. Rito?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. That is the applicant's presentation. We're certainly here to answer any other questions that may arise.
Sure. We'll get to that. If anyone here that wants to speak in favor, speak in favor. First call, second call, third call closed. Our response. My name is D W, number one zero three, eighteen fourteen, thousand sixteen, Mike fifty Adams Street, case number sixteen oh three eight. Review the submitted and the referenced project, our comments are as follows. The operation and maintenance plan of the drainage system should be submitted for review and recorded from NFR County Registered Dees. Plan should include financial responsibilities for the maintenance work to whom it will be vested. Two, the drainage system should be cleaned and checked for integrity. For integrity. Three, the traffic volume will be increased through proposed development. We repress the existing catch basin to be upgraded with four-foot supplement groundwater recharge capacity. Further, please advise. If there are anyone here opposed or undecided, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. If anyone else wants to speak, please come up and stand in line. You don't have to wait for people to come from the audience, if you would, please. Stand right up here, name and address, that's fine.
Hello, Dan Gillis, nine thirty-four, Francis Parkway. From my lived family room, I can look straight across and see where the parking area is going to be. I have five main concerns. First, obviously, traffic. Seven, six thirty to probably eight o'clock. Adams Street is backed up almost from East Milton Square to Francis Parkway. I mean, it's pretty steady. It's very frustrating trying to drive over in the morning, adding more cars to that, I don't feel it helps. Second thing is noise. I don't know where the border window is going to be, but it's going to have to be awfully close to those apartments. And I don't know if there's anybody living in those apartments here tonight, but it's not that far from us either. And I don't appreciate waking up at five-thirty in the morning, somebody screaming about how they want their coffee. Third thing, traffic. I don't know what it is about people driving and cars, but they seem to be more willing to toss stuff out the windows. Related to that is pollution. He's talking about thirteen to sixteen cars waiting in a queue idling. That can't be good for our health. Last point, I don't know if it's on this plan, but currently, well, currently it's blocked off. There was a cut through from the apartments to get into that parking lot. And based on having a drive-through there, I don't see how you could do that for safety reasons. But that was kind of a benefit to the neighbors who have to deal with this retail development. You could walk through, you know, I liked them. You could walk through, you know, I, I liked Dunkin' Donuts, I'd go there, I'd probably go there anyway, but to be able to walk through there and that parking lot, there wasn't many cars, so you could feel safe getting across there and then walking on the sidewalk. There's a dance studio there, lots of little kids coming and going. They also do music. My son is able to walk across the street with his guitar and go to that dance studio, but now we have to drive him around. It's crazy. Uh, so I think in this day and age, we shouldn't be encouraging more cars and more traffic. That is a nice little development there. Uh, before the roof collapse, piece of place was building an outdoor patio. A lot of teenagers were going there eating. That would have been a real nice thing that they could walk to. Now, it's just going to be all cars and all traffic. Really sorry that they're trying to do this.
Thanks, Mr. Gillis. Uh, this is your letter. You sent to Brian Calmucci. We don't have to read it into the records since you just spoke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Dumas, sixty-nine Common Street. I've lived at sixty-nine Common Street since nineteen ninety-one. I have been in that plaza many times. My three daughters have worked with Walgreens and Dunkin' Donuts, and I just texted my older daughter, and she recalled getting deliveries through the back door. So, I don't know. Um, I have to agree with the amount of traffic. Any Dunkin' Donuts is going to draw traffic. Common Street is a cut-through street. It's horrendous. I have a half-acre lot with a beautiful backyard, and I can't sit out there in the evening because of the traffic. There's going to be a huge development opening on Corey Street. It will draw more traffic down there. I just see disaster, but this is allowed to happen. Um, the parking, I don't know when they did their, their parking lot study, but when the dance studio was open in the winter, there's cars parked all over the place, along all the curves, little kids running all over the place. It's not safe. So, um, I hope you turn this down. I think it was a wonderful little Dunkin' Donuts. I went there many times. There's no problem with, with parking and going in. Between the bike lane and that left-turn lane is a joke. It's used as a raceway to cut people off. Nobody honors that. And how are you going to stop people from parking in a monitored employee parking lot? You can't give them tickets. They park where they want now. They, they will not honor that. We live in Massachusetts, so I see. I can see where, all you have to do is look at that drive-through up on, um, where the can is, between the light, it's impossible. So, um, thank you for holding this hearing, and I hope you turn this down.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
Thank you.
Next. Yes, my name is Evan Cowan, and this is the neighborhood meeting, which we did not yet. I, there be apartments directly behind what is now the building. Their love has been said for, everything has been said by the previous couple of people that came up here is exactly right. We have a hill coming down. You cannot see traffic, uh, the car coming until it gets down the hill. If they're going fast, there's going to be an accident. That is my first thing. A, a left-hand turn should never be considered for something like this. It's just too dangerous. You'd have to put a light there, and that means more money. Also, all this green we see on the picture, being there, there are deliveries at all times of the day, frequently twenty-foot box trucks, tanker trucks to take used oil, garbage trucks, many times. And they have to back in, back behind the building, and, and pull out. How a Dunkin' Donuts truck is going to get in there? And they use big tractor-trailers. Now, I don't know. I think that's kind of ill-conceived. The egress that we have has given that place a lot of business. And, um, I can't see how, you know, they can even block it off because it's been there quite a while. And knowing a little bit about something like that, you know, there's a right to keep it open. But I, you know, I think it's, the whole thing is kind of ill-conceived, and it's not about convenience, because I know Dunkin' Donuts, it's about money. You get too many cars coming in, and you have a backup. People are waiting. That's anything, but it brings in the money, and that's why every Dunkin' Donuts would like one. And I hear this from people who own the Dunkin' Donuts. I'm personally friends with the people that own the Franklin Street. I used to use the Center Street. I was in the delivery business at one time. But, you know, some things just didn't John. I'd say, so conceived, that idea.
Thanks. Next.
Hi, I'm Zellie Neff, I live at sixteen Common Street.
What do you want to say?
Napstead, maybe a street, two streets away from me. Um, just, that's a walking road to an elementary school and a middle school and high school place to walk by. That is, um, it's dangerous. The cars don't stop. Um, there are two crossing dots there on one of them. I have the big intersection. I have a picture on my phone, at seven-twenty in the morning, traffic is backed up from that intersection all the way into East Milton Square, taking a left down that avenue. That left-hand lane is, they use that as a passing lane to cut the car off in the right-hand lane if that car is doing a speed limit. The sidewalk on the right-hand side, the kids have to walk single file because it is not big enough for a parent who will be in the carriage and have the child to walk next to it. And the parents have to put the kids on the inside, single file, because that's how close those cars come, almost taking our children on the sidewalk. They don't start to cross them down on the talk of all regret. It's a horror show. Adams Street is now a two-lane road. They make it two lanes, but the lane is going straight into East Milton Square, and the cars that want to pay go right. And cars who don't want to sit in the long路traffic to go straight, they go into our right-hand lane, and then they cut off all the cars. There's multiple accidents on Adams Street in the morning. It's just, it's not worth it. I think, or we shut it down before because we didn't want it. It's too dangerous. The kids cross there to go to school. I mean, there's a lot of them. And you're going to put a crossing sign there so the kids get across that safely in the morning? I mean, who's going to pay for that? We don't need a light there. They, you know, you can't take a left turn, and you can't get out of there. The park runs a fast when it's there. There's two, there's a ton of cars in that parking lot. Kids are running everywhere. There's a cut-through for the apartment building. Kids cut through there to get to school. From the apartment buildings, they cut through and they walk along to the sidewalk. The cars don't stop. It's not, you know, they're walking on the grass to get down to us, or walking up to our cross up there. So please, we don't want it. Hopefully, for the safety of the kids, I mean, you don't think of that.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Nick?
Good evening. My name is Kevin. The last bill is one twenty-five Cliff Street, um, just a block or two up from my neighbor just now, um, less than a quarter mile from here. Uh, I won't bore you by repeating everything else that's just been said. I will simply say that everything they said goes just as much for me. Every day on my way to work, I go through East Milton Square, and making a left onto Adams Street is difficult at best, um, because just like, just like you just heard, it is frequently two, 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 two cars wide as you go along. It's not meant to be, but Adams Street is that wide. People use it, it's there. Um, you know, the famous quote from the movie, "If you build it, they will come," um, which is precisely what I know you gentlemen are hoping for. Um, and I know that these are probably conservative estimates you're hoping for, for this particular project, you know, for the number of, for the amount of traffic that you're hoping to bring in, and you would be ecstatic if more came in and, and made it for a very successful business. And, and that's what capitalism is all about, and that's fantastic, except that's not, aside from all the, the traffic and safety concerns, frankly, as my first neighbor said, I don't think we need another reason to not get out of our cars.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jim Napst, I live at sixteen Common Street. Uh, I just, what is it? I'm not opposed to Dunkin' Donuts. I'm actually happy to see them back. When it, when the roof caved in last year, there was a noticeable difference in the traffic in and out afterwards. Dunkin' Donuts, it's a lot of people in the area during the day. Now, traffic counts were done after the collapse, so it didn't include any traffic, isn't it? Now, I'm not even opposed to the drive-thru necessarily, but I think it's the wrong time for it. Let the businesses move in, then do some new traffic count with real numbers instead of projections, and then review that issue. We'll see what it looks like that'll lead us there before we have some more reliable numbers. I just think we're getting ahead of ourselves here at this point. That's all I-
Thank you, Mr. Napst. Second call, opposed or undecided? Third call, call if party hearing closed. And I have a letter here, a bunch of letters that I have to put in, uh, that are opposed. You know, just write, read their names. I don't have to bore you with all the information that everyone talked about tonight, they said the same thing. Uh, this is from Calmucci, thinks it's a bad idea. And I got a, those are notes, and then I have a letter here. Matters of government policy, I find in any opinion to be rare as a dancing unicorn. However, in this matter, I have heard no one beyond the applicant that believes the community would be better improved with a drive-thru, and he goes, "Oh, no, he's not concerned." A letter here from, uh, which the clerk received. Denise Downing, opposed. Brenda Chin, opposed. Jessica King, opposed. Barbara Linda Pritchett, opposed. These are people that live right near there and walk there and want Dunkin' Donuts but don't want to drive. Those are these letters. And this here is from Susan Dolan and Gregory Dolan, Furnace Parkway.
Thank you.
Uh, from Kim Tran, worried about the kids, shouldn't have it. Sarah Phillips, not want to drive. All that, uh, the hearing closed. Personally, uh, I love going Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-thru. I'll probably be doing something in my car except for bar and coffee, making phone calls and doing other stuff. But the way I look at that, the way I look at that whole traffic up there, I think it's a bad idea, Mr. Reed. I just, uh, not because, you know, what they said. I went up there and looked, I went up there in the morning, I went up to the, you know, and I just watched it happen, and I just think it's not a good place to drive to right now at all, at all. Any picture of people coming out taking a bus to here and right, so, so I'll be voting no on that. Ladies, any comments?
Still not really satisfied about this whole delivery thing. Uh, you know, it's done in the front, I don't like it, but it's already there. Uh, it's done in the back, it's a, you have your green space that was in the, in the course there, and I would vote, I would vote against it.
Mr. O'Brien, any comments?
Uh, yes, looking, looking at this, I prefer to see it built up first, um, to see where the volumes are. I have a realistic traffic study at that merge, um, especially that left queue one to half to the peak hour. Uh, I mean, we could suppose that it might be a little freaked out, like, see actual numbers, maybe it's a little bit.
Chin?
I'm opposed. Well, I'm concerned about the traffic on Adams Street, concerned about the left turn and the right turn, so at this point in time, I'm not opposed to it.
Mr. Reed. Counselor? What we usually do is I'll give you a chance to withdraw this petition if you'd like. Anything comes back to us, if there'd be a major change-
I have two seconds, help.
You get two seconds. Time's up.
I would, I would just ask the board just to vote on the matter. You know, I guess by all, by all they comment, Mr. Jim, and, and I, I hear the board's concern. I think it's important, however, that this board distinguishes existing traffic from new traffic. And I think the numbers, as, as we discussed with Mr. Radel, uh, indicated that there's, we're not talking about a significant increase in traffic. The reality is that Dunkin' Donuts can and will go back there. The issue is the, does the drive-thru create a hazard that's not existing now?
Yes, it will.
Well, based on the traffic numbers, based on the, the traffic numbers done by a professional traffic, and that's not the case, that would be the only thing I would consider. And, and I heard Mr. O'Brien's comments about, you know, coming up and providing more accurate numbers, if, you know, and I think, I can't remember, one of the other members, maybe Mr. Radel indicated that as well, that having tenants in place and then considering the traffic. Uh, because I've dealt with this issue on a number of occasions, not only with this body, but with the city council as well. Traffic is a very sensitive, tough topic in when basing decisions on traffic, because the boards oftentimes base their decision on existing traffic problems. And it's really important that we're not do so here, that, that, that denial be based on, on the increase. And I, I haven't heard that last one tonight, and that's my only concern.
And I'll let you know, there's two things that I got a reason for to know. One is all those apartment buildings there and being queued up for two or three hours and right in front of their door. I don't think that's a good thing. And two, the traffic there is horrendous now, and the drive-thru is just not, we don't need to increase fifteen percent in that parking lot during a peak hour. That's, that's my thing. Now, we'll be written as such.
Thank you, Counsel.
And I have a motion to deny, please.
In matter number sixteen dash zero three eight, New Creek LLC for a special permit variance to instruct a drive-through window to serve Dunkin' Donuts business on the premises number five five zero, and as requisite, I make a motion to deny special permission of variance.
Second? On the motion, CNN on, favor?
I oppose.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Let's take five minutes, if we can. Let's take five minutes, if we can.
I think there. But that was a good study, wasn't it?
Yeah, you can, you can, you just can't come back in it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, if you go outside, it's lost. But yeah, you can leave that way.
I'm gonna stay and see what the next thing is. I find it all interesting.
Civil disobedience, yes. As you can see, when the people stand up, they say, oh, he's not here, you know?
Ian Kane is not here, he's not part of this, they're the zoning people, shit, he wrote the letter, he should have been here. Well, I agree, Bob, go get him. No, he's gonna get a phone call from me. And me too.
I think he was afraid to come and face us.
Well, is that technically Ward Three or Ward Four? Okay, Ward Three, well, I've noticed like, like Ian didn't really seem up against that hotel on West One Street, which they approved, whatever we're talking about, like right next to Longcliff School. Like, that's gonna be horrible for the neighborhood, that's four. Yeah. You know what it is? Unfortunately, their co-ops are there for the next three and a half years, he owns all the city councils. There isn't a two city governments, because they all, when they do come up here and talk, it's just all, you know what I mean? People, I'm standing up at the Taxpayer Association, you know what I'm gonna stand up with? I'm gonna stand up the neighborhood, we don't need the ward council. I live in Pointe, actually, my parents, we live on Gromoll, so we live our own close. Well, I'm the one, they were talking about, yeah, yeah, well, like I said, I, 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 well, I saw videotape and all of the things. I actually waited to see who won out of the three, who went up against Koch, and then wanted really throw my support, you know, to one of the other three. So, Phelan won, but I knew once Phelan won, that he didn't have a shit. I thought maybe there could be a landslide, and maybe the people would get behind it, you know?
So, your job is to be able to tell.
Well, you know what, someone else videotaped it, and it's a great story, isn't it? And I put it on YouTube, so they can show it to me. No, no, I have nothing to do, see? I'm not affiliated at all, but what I'm, like I said, what I'm trying to do is,
Well, you know what, there's nothing we buy, one on one.
Well, it's almost impossible, it's like, you know, it's like there's different channels of communication, like right now, you're just gonna go to Chris Walker, and like, like, when I leave, when I leave the message, I don't get a call. So, the only way you're gonna really, oh, totally, the only way you're gonna get to someone is, I used to just sit in front of City Hall, and I'd wait for the person to walk out, and you kinda gotta get them.
She probably has a private door back. Who can even get into the home? I actually sell, I'm, I'm selling this side right now, I just, I just, I just crashed my whole phone.
Where are we gonna park?
There's nowhere.
It really is, it's sad, because in the next three years, they're giving away towards the center, and they're calling it, like, crazy right now, and I gotta focus on my, 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 my,
Good job!
We're standing up, well, actually, these guys are sort of in there.
Good job!
We can get back, please. Brother on tonight's agenda, case number 16039, Barry Val Castro and Kim Shaughnessy, great finding to construct an addition on the footprint, gain additional office space on premise 299 Water Street, is the African representative here?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, Board, thanks for taking your time here. Myself and Kim Shaughnessy are here to request a finding, construct an addition to an existing footprint to gain additional office space. Given myself one individual construction companies, and need an additional space if we're going to build.
Could I have your name and address?
Barry Val Castro, 124 Craft 3 Rose.
And I see you're standing on the same footprint, you're just raising it up, you're just looking for a finding. Any questions to the African?
How far is this gonna be?
It's roughly about 30 feet.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed, I have a letter here from DTW, June 7, 2016, from Wall Street, case number 16039. Review the above property project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call, third time closed, I'll be voting for it. Any comments?
In matter number 16-04, oh, no, no, 039, I'm sorry. Barry Val Castro and Kim Shaughnessy, for a finding to instruct an addition to existing footprint to gain additional office space on premises number 299 Water Street Quincy. Take a motion to grant a finding, with the condition that it may always be used for commercial activity.
Second? On the motion, CNN on favor? I oppose, no more. Thank you. Brother on tonight's agenda, case number 1604, Williams and Marie Mulcahy, Mulcahy, I'm sorry, for finding, variance finding subdivided property 59 Noelwood Road in Quincy, the African representative, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming. I do represent William and Marie Mulcahy. They are here this evening, if you have any questions for them as well. Again, the property is 57 Noelwood Road in Squanum. It's located in Residence A Zoning District. Currently improved by a non-deforming, single-family home, lot size of just over 15,000 square feet. Important to point out to the board as well, that this property is actually three separate lots at one time, don't pull lots back in the day. The Mulcahy's, with spearheaded is really, you know, they're at the stage of their lives when they want to downsize where they live in. The current home where they reside is now, it's a four-bedroom home. And so, it's downsizing to a smaller home, and it's also staying in the Squanum area, close to family. They have a daughter who's selling her home to purchase this one, that 57. So, again, this would be a subdivision of this, of this property. We're varying from the way the lots are, just slightly, just moving a line over. You see it on the plans, it's about a little over three feet, moving that line. The reason we did that is just to improve one of the setbacks, but also to be able to provide parking on the other side of the home. But it also allowed us to improve the front and that side setback as well, on that side, without, you know, affecting the side setback of the existing one. So, the proposed home they are constructing is a 1,600 square foot home, it's a two-bedroom, one and a half bath home. We both have two, a driveway for two vehicles to park as well. In order to accomplish this, we do need the board's help, and we are requesting variances. The variances, I would think are minimal, it's for the lot size for the proposed lot with the proposed home, and minor setback relief as well, you know, for that home. So, again, these are, it's a family that have lived in the area of Squanum for 45 years, they've lived at this current residence for the last 26 years. They know a lot of their neighbors, you know, in the area, they've spoken to all of them. I did speak to Consular Harris as well, to advise of him that the Mulcahy's had to receive any opposition, are real concerns for many neighbors. They had discussions, you know, and those things were worked out with the neighbors. So, we did not have a neighborhood meeting, Consular Harris is here as well, seeing that he'll probably say a few words. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and Mulcahy's is here to answer them.
You're looking for a couple feet up front, I saw you looking. And, I know the opposite side did, but just one question, why only one and a half baths? How come they didn't put a second bath in the master bedroom?
Quick question, not my, not my call.
Just one, I was just wondering. Why would you want someone to stay over and be in your bathroom?
I try to stay out of it, but I won't work.
Any questions?
Nope, I have none.
Thank you. Counselor, do you like to say something?
I just wanted to say, good people, family, no opposition.
You have half the word?
No opposition.
Very good.
None to my office.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Thank you for coming here tonight and doing that for your constituents. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call, second call? I have a letter here from the Stamos, Jim and Marie. There are two cases under the business, 1640 Noelwood Road, and case number 1641, 210 Bellevue, which I am writing in favor of passing both cases. Call that part of hearing closed, is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call, second call? Third call? Call that part of hearing closed, I have a letter here from the DTW, June 7, 2016, 57 Noelwood Road, case number 16040. Review this middle area of our project, our comments are as follows. Specify how much in previous area would be increased due to the development. Provide plan showing the existing site conditions, layout to utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate public right-of-way, and the monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Number five, provide dimensions of grade for paving area of all driveway entrances. Six, repair all utility trenches in the public right-of-way, and control density fill and infrared. Number seven, apply stormwater connection permit for the Department of Public Works Construction. Number eight, upon completion of this project as-built, show any, in all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, defining total site facilities, right-of-ways need to be submitted along with digital file, these as-built should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor. Seeing there's no opposition, Counselor, save, very nice people. I'll be voting in favor of this.
I'm in favor.
But that's a motion, boys.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In matter number 16-040, William Mulcahy, for a variance finding to subdivide the property, construct a single-family residence on the premises number 59, sorry, 57 Noelwood Road Quincy, any permission granted there?
Second? On the motion, CNN on favor? I oppose, no more. Okay, where's the owner?
Right there.
Here's your set of plans, hold on. Brother on tonight's new business, case number 16041, Jonathan Alberti, for variance to subdivide the property, existing house, and prines of 82.27 feet instead of 85, in front of 210 Bellevue Road, is the African representative here?
Good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Steve DeRoche, and I'm part of Bellevue Survey Associates. Our office is located at 95 Water Street here in the city of Quincy. From here this evening, I'm representing Mr. Jonathan Alberti, who is the current owner of 210 Bellevue Road. Mr. Alberti is a passable man, not quite 27,000 square feet. He's got enough room, obviously, for like three lots, three house lots. The only problem is frontage, he has, he has about 115 feet on Bellevue Road, and on Bellevue Street, he has something like 84.27 feet. The minimum frontage is 85. So, we're asking that we create this lot one on Bellevue Road. Lot one will have a 13-foot wide access system on the Norvally side, and that would be the access lot two. Although, he could come, you know, up off Bellevue Street, but he does want to keep the access on Bellevue.
All right, but what about, you know where that shed is in the back?
Yes.
Can't that come out and put in two parking spaces there too?
I'm sorry.
You know where the shed is in the back?
Yes.
Right up, what's that?
Small one or the big one?
I know, it's tough to get in and out of there, but at least they have two more parking spaces out back, that's a utility, it's gonna have a lot of people over.
They're gonna have plenty of parking, I'm sure it is.
Is he gonna take down that shed, he's gonna have 13 feet, is he gonna stack parking on that side? How's he gonna get to his yard?
The 15 feet would be nothing more than to gain access to the lot itself.
But it runs right into that big shed.
Yeah, which is probably gonna be removed.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If he's gonna take that out, that's different, that makes a difference. All right, so that'll be removed. That front shed. And he's gonna leave that little shed, the back shed?
Correct.
Okay, the big shed's gone, so they can park there. Those are my questions, I just wanna, I know he could always, there's something in the back, and it's just tough to get in and out of them all. Any questions, you have to, your points I get tonight?
Yes, they are.
I love that you look at Paul and you look at Ray's story the other day.
I like that.
I like the banners.
Well, you guys sell your house, what about the truth?
That thing's never going anywhere.
I tell you, adoration's.
I have no questions. No questions. Parking is the lot two, you're talking about regular sheds.
Yeah, when he comes in, he's gonna take that shed down, so he can get in there and just go and run into the shed and end up with a stack parking. Reed, any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? We step forward, name the address. Yeah, you can go from there, that's fine.
I'd like to speak in favor naturally, Sean Johnson.
Name? Your name and address?
Okay, my name is Merrill Ledens, and I live in Park Avenue, 1st Street Bellevue Road. For John, and naturally, I wanted to see him, subdivide the land, so he could have a home for his son. Same thing my father did, he bought his six for me when I got out of the city. He had watch from, you know, Bellevue Road to Park Avenue.
Wish he had him now, I bet.
You know, I just thought I'd say something, you just say it.
Thank you, slurs. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Second call? I have a Stamos letter, they're in favor. And I have a letter here, oh, this is from Chris Cowell. So, he's looking, you only need a fourth of frontage, and he says, nice things about everybody, and he'd like to see that that's, would be a nice piece of property to build a new home. With that, I'll call a part of the hearing, part of the hearing closed, I have a letter I have a letter here from the DPW, June eighth, twenty sixteen, two ten Bellevue Road, case number sixteen oh four one. We review the above listed projects and have no comment. Is there anyone opposed to undecided? Opposed or undecided? Counselor?
Please. Another two in a row, families, it's all good, all family. That's what it's about.
It's good. You're happy with that?
Oh, not, no opposition at all.
And again, thank you for spending the night here. I know you've got better things to do, Counselor, and you're busy all the time, you ought to be here, but we appreciate you coming down and letting us know how you...
Yeah, I thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Favor? Comments?
I'll be voting in favor, too. We need to meet in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, move the shed on that bottom. Move that front shed. Comments?
No comments.
Comments? Great, all?
Amendment sixteen there, zero four one, Jonathan Alberti, great variance to subdivide the property with existing park area. Lot, house lots frontage, funny, eighty-four point two seven feet instead of eighty-five, on premise number two ten Bellevue Road, Quincy County, variance with the condition that the shed gets removed. The bigger of the whole sheds.
Second?
Next.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, so move. Thank you, Counselor, for your time. Thank you, everyone, for coming to speak to the people. Last case, number sixteen oh four two, seven fifteen Parker Street, inc. seller manager for special permit variance to construct a thirty-two unit residential building on premise number one fifty-one Granite Street, AKA seven thirteen fifteen twenty-one Parker Street. The applicant representative here. Consular Harris. Just so the board knows, we got a letter from Jay, who handed us tonight, and says, unfortunately, I cannot attend the CBA meeting in person. I received notice from constituents who are in opposition to this project and would appreciate the opportunity and more time to defend their case. On my behalf, I hope you would kindly ask the CBA for continuance on this project here until next court of mediation. Thank you, Dan Kane. And what I have to say about that is we had a year that was approved in April from the planning board. This has been going on, and that's plenty meeting, my opinion. I say here the case, which is my... Mr. Duke, would you give us a background? I know there's been many, many hearings, there's been, this was on or not?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There have been many, many hearings. The applicant has done a lot to streamline and make the project a good project. I would tell this board that they should look at the fact that the planning board passed this special permit. I would look at that as a positive recommendation for the planning board.
And that was in April?
And that was in April, Chris.
Are we allowed to speak right now?
No. Any comments?
No.
About asking for continuance with the variance, Counselor asked for the thing, is I just think since state boards have been approved from the planning board, it's going on for over a year.
He hasn't canceled.
No, I'm not saying that, but it's six months.
Did he have a...
I'm fine.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
What was the person, what was the reason in the letter that he answered?
He says he has some people in opposition that he wants to help. Phil Dick is in opposition. I just think it's been a long time. It really has. It's been a long time, and it's tough getting, a Congressman getting in and trying to get everything done, but this was done in April. The planning board's in order, they had meetings, how many other meetings?
Many meetings. I'm sure the attorney came.
Hoffman, that meeting.
I suspect that these are the same folks that attended the planning board hearings, that were opposed. The planning board did vote to approve the rock.
Ma'am, ma'am, please.
There was opposition, some opposition. The planning board voted, and I would look at that as a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Continue, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. My law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway, and I represent Anton Chella, who is the applicant on this application. We began this process back in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. We had a neighborhood meeting in the winter of two thousand and fifteen, January or February. We filed the application with the planning board in April of two thousand and fifteen, and it took almost an entire year to get an affirmative vote from the planning board to approve this project. The biggest issue is obviously how the rock, it's the site itself, it's the rock, it's blasting, how will the blasting be done? How will that work, be carried out? And it took a year to get satisfactory answers from the planning board to all the questions that they had about the site work to prepare this site for this building. But they did approve site plan review in April, issued their decision, and that decision is now passed the appeal period, so there's no appeal on that decision. With me this evening is Anton Chella, the applicant, Mike Joyce from Joyce Consulting, which he was the architect. Tom Fennick from McPhail Associates is with me. He's our geotechnical engineer. Also Andy Dufour, who's an expert in drilling with May Drilling and Blasting. And Jack Gillen, a traffic engineer on this project, is also here, if you have any questions from him, specifically about traffic. This application, it's an application for a special permit to do a multifamily building in the business C zoning district, as well as dimensional variances. And we're asking to construct a thirty-two residential, thirty-two unit residential building in the business C zoning districts. This project, one of the dimensional variances that we're asking for is this, the ordinance has a footnote that says that if you do a multifamily building in business C, you need forty-two thousand square foot block. We have a thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one square foot block. That's one of the variances that we're asking for. We're also asking for a variance for the side yard setback and the front yard setback. On this particular project, the hardship for the variances is very clear. There's absolutely no question that the hardship on this property relates to soil conditions, the shape, and the geography. This property has all three. The lot is an unusual shape. It's covered with ledge, and the topography changes from forty-six feet to a hundred and two feet at the back. The financial hardship, again, is obvious from the cost of site work and the cost of blasting in order to prepare this property for this building. We've, as I said, we've been through site plan review. We've submitted geotechnical reports, expert testimony, stormwater management, the ledge removal, the blasting, impact, traffic analysis, parking, and access pedestrians and vehicles onto the site and off of the site. The specific variances that we're asking for, the heaviest amounts of ledge on this property are along this side of the building and through the back. And for that reason, the building is pushed over close to Granite Street and close to Parker Street to avoid the heaviest part of the ledge and to minimize the amount of blasting and the amount of rock that has to be removed from the site in order to build the building. So one of the variances that we're asking for is the setback requirement. The setback requirement on this side of the building is sixteen point eight feet. Our setback is nine point five feet in the middle. It's greater than what's required in the back, greater than what's required in the front. The average on the side is more than what's required, but it is nine point five feet at the smallest location here. On the front, our setback here is twelve point eight feet. Again, sixteen point eight is what's required. The average is more than sixteen feet. It's more than sixteen feet here, here, and here, but at that point, it's twelve point eight. So we've asked for variances for the front yard setback and also the side yard. The second, the other variance we're asking for is to have a thirty-two thousand square foot lot. We believe that all the factors that are required for granting a variance are present on this site. There are definitely soil conditions, shape and topography, and a financial hardship that justify granting a variance. If this lot was a forty-two thousand square foot lot, it would be eighty-four units by right under our zoning. Our zoning allows five hundred square feet of land per unit in business C if you have a forty-two thousand square foot lot or more. So this would be an eighty-four unit building if the lot was bigger. Even at thirty-two thousand square feet, using five hundred square feet per unit, it would be a sixty-four unit building. It's not either of those things. We're proposing a thirty-two unit building on a thirty-three thousand square foot lot, and our lot area per dwelling unit is over a thousand square feet per unit, which is less than, it's double the amount of land that's called for in the ordinance, and it's less than half the density that the ordinance would allow. We've also have, the building is, a three point five FAR is allowed in business C. Our FAR is one point four six, so again, the building is less than half the maximum density that this building could be in business C. It is not an overly large building, and it's not an overly dense building for the zoning district where it is. This property is not in the Parker Street neighborhood. This property is on Granite Street. It has a Granite Street address and has Granite Street frontage, and this building is designed to be a business C Quincy Center, Granite Street building, and that's how the entire thing was designed. With me this evening is Arthur Chu, the architect. I'm going to introduce him first to talk to you about the building, about its size and the units and all of that, and then we'll turn it over to Mike Joyce, who's the civil engineer.
Thank you, Counselor.
The building as designed is a thirty-two unit building. It works its way into the hill as...
Name and address, Chris, please, sorry.
Arthur Chu, One Building Road, Quincy, Mass. Architect. The thirty-two units, and it works its way in the hill where, facing Granite Street, it's seven stories, but on the back, on the top of the hill, it's only four stories. Hey, can you show it to everyone? Sure. Twenty-eight of them coming off of Granite Street, and then on the rear of the building, there are twenty units on the upper level, on the level above. The two levels are parking. Every floor has eight levels, so there's three floors with eight levels. The unit size is about nine hundred and sixty-four square feet per unit. There are two bathroom, two bath units.
Eight units, you mean? Every floor has eight units?
Yes.
Yeah.
Two baths, two baths each unit. Then on the upper floor, there's eight more units that are fifteen hundred square feet. They duplex out into a sort of a mezzanine-type level, it's not a full floor, that provides living area, the top unit with the deck in each, in front of each unit. The building footprint is nine thousand seven hundred square feet, and the materials we're using is a metal panel and a hardy board system to create, to break down the scale of the building. The difference in grade elevation coming up.
Michael Joyce of Joyce Consulting Group, Hundred Wyman Road, Granite Street, with the engineers for the project. As Arthur had mentioned, it's an existing thirty-three thousand square foot lot with a multifamily home on it. Multifamily home, the associated garage would be demolished. Proposing to construct a thirty-two unit building with forty-eight parking spaces, twenty-nine in the first level, which would be accessed from Grant, the Grant Street driveway here, and nineteen on the second level of parking, which would be accessed from Parker Street here. The proposed stormwater, currently there's no stormwater collection on site. We'd be proposing nine cultech infiltration units below grade to collect the rooftop runoff and be directed into the infiltration chambers. Chambers during heavy storms would overflow into the city of Quincy drainage system. All the drains have been designed in compliance with the Mass Stormwater Handbook, and there'd be no overall increase in the rate of runoff from the site as required. The driveway runoff will be collected by trench drains and catch basins, treated by storm septic units, and directed to the city drainage system as well. The, the reason for the two levels of parking or the reason for the access on opposite sides is, as Arthur had mentioned, the height difference between Grant Street and Parker Street. There's approximately a fifty-five foot difference in elevation from front to back. So where you'd be coming straight in on Grant Street, there should be sloping, the driveway is sloping down to the second level of parking. The project will also include new utilities, new water and fire, domestic water and fire connections, new gas connections, new sewer connection. It'll be, all the, the access from Grant Street will be ADA compliant, and there'll be two handicap parking spaces within the first floor of the parking garage. And that's about it from a civil engineering standpoint. If there's any questions.
So you're saying it's like four floors of eight units and two floors of parking? Is that what I got there?
Yes. Okay. Also with us tonight is Tom Fennick from McPhail Associates, a geotechnical engineer, and Andy Dufour from May Drilling and Blasting.
My name's Andy Dufour. I'm with May Drilling and Blasting, two ninety-six West Street, Milford, Massachusetts. I'm here to talk a little bit about the blasting and how we'd approach the blasting on this project. There's roughly eleven thousand cubic yards that would have to come out of here in order to gain the footprint to this building. For the blasting process, we'd start with pre-blast surveys. Any home within two hundred and fifty feet of the blast zone would get a pre-blast survey before we could obtain a permit. How we would approach the site from a blasting standpoint, we'd take advantage of the natural relief and the grade. We would start back here and work our way in. We would design all blasts to be appropriate and safe for the closest structure. That's two inches per second per CMR thirteen. We do that by controlling our charge weight per delay in each borehole, so we have to determine how much rock we need to fragment and the closest structure, and we start from there to determine a safe vibration limit for the neighboring homes. When the actual blasts take place, there'd be traffic control on Granite Street and Parker Street. We'll have sentries placed to make sure the blast zone is safe. All blasts will be covered with blasting mats, which are recycled tires. They're twelve by twenty-four. They weigh eleven thousand pounds each, and we will typically put two or three, so we'll double or triple mat to prevent any rock from leaving the blast zone. There's a series of horns and whistles. They start at five minutes with three long whistles. Then there's two short whistles at one minute, then the blast detonates, and when the blaster has determined that the blast site is safe, there's one whistle, and it's all clear, and traffic gets released, and everybody goes back to work. So that's the synopsis of how we approach.
How many blasts roughly we try?
We have about twenty blast days, and we'd probably start with about two a day. When we got into the meat of the site, we might be able to take one bigger one, getting the same production, but it's going to depend on the blast design and what we have to do to control the vibrations.
Did you say twenty days?
Twenty days, yes. That's a blasting. We will, before we start blasting, we're actually going to do what's called perimeter control because of the deep cut here. We're actually going to drill a hole every eight inches on center without explosives in it to create any backbreak beyond where we want the rock to stop breaking. So that operation will take place beforehand. There'll be twenty days of blasting, of actually blasting with explosives.
So before drilling all those holes, where you get your, you do the whole area?
We have the pre-blast survey before the first blast, the explosion. Yes, we have the pre-blast survey. Anyone who wishes to have a survey within two hundred and fifty feet of the closest borehole.
And how do you, how do you notify the applicant at their home or the person that...
How the regulations read the CMRs, you can start with a door hanger or knocking the door. We have to provide three attempts, one being a certified letter. Yeah, and that's what we bring down to, to fire prevention when we apply for the permit. Yeah, and that's what we bring down to fire prevention when we apply for the permit.
I have a question. How has... you know, people have this idea of blasting in their heads. How has the business industry changed in 20 years? Well, they're only in engineering.
Yeah, it's a lot... so the technology of the initiation system is really where the technology has grown. So, you know, you picture the Clinties would puffing on his cigar, lighting the cap and fuse and running away. I mean, those days are over. They're over. They're over. And, you know, it's kind of funny. We're on our 50... we're celebrating our 50th anniversary this year, and we've got some pictures of our owner, you know, running to duck behind his car, and that was considered the site's security plan. That's all behind us now. They actually have what are called electronic detonators now, which each blasting cap has a computer chip in it that you can program down to the millisecond. So really, what that does is it takes out any of what's called cap scatter, any of the holes overlapping and going off at the same time and creating a greater vibration. So it's in the initiation system where the technology has really come a long way. It's that, it's how each individual blast hole goes off and at what time it goes off. So you could have one bore hole, and in these depth of cuts, you could have three blasting caps in it, and they're going off at a millisecond apart. So it's a series... in one complete blast, the aggregate of it, it's a series of little micro blasts, and each one's going off milliseconds apart to control the vibration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
I have this question about fireworks.
No, no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your last but not least, I'm Tom Fennick with McPhail Associates. We're geotechnical engineers. We're located at 2269 Massachusetts Avenue in Cambridge. We were hired back in March 2016 to do a geotechnical survey of the property. The way we did that was we did geological mapping of the rock that you can see at ground surface, the large outcrops. And we also, you know, in conjunction with Maine Drilling and Blasting, Andrew's firm, we did a bunch of rock probes. And the main reason to do the rock probes is to determine the top of the rock for purposes of estimating how much rock needs to be removed. And what we ended up finding from that survey was this area back here has been explained as high rock, but it drops off fairly steeply, and there actually is a substantial amount of soil on this part that will have to be removed before they even get to the rock. So that's how we established how much, you know, bedrock is there. One other thing, I don't know if Andrew touched on it, but there'll be vibration monitoring when the blasting is going on. The seismographs will be stationed at the property line, and there'll be multiple seismographs, and the owner will probably also engage McPhail Associates to have a separate set, you know, basically a third-party seismograph setup, just to make sure that the levels conform with US perof mine's criteria.
It won't be required as part of the blasting contractor to provide those readings every day to the daily fire detail from Quincy Fire, so we have to provide those readings, so they're inspecting us daily.
Yep. So as the blasting is going on, the other part of this whole thing is to make this excavation safe, because it is, you know, a good 30-foot cut over here to up to 40-foot, you know, of rock cut back here. And in order to make it safe, as Andrew described, there's going to be first a series of dowels that are going to be drilled in to prestabilize the rock face in advance of the drilling and blasting. And then the drilling and blasting will take place in lifts. It won't be taken out all at once. It'll be taken off in, you know, two 20-foot depths and taken off. And as the rock is being excavated down, McPhail Associates will be on site to observe the rock face, take measurements, geological measurements, and then to... there'll be a contingency to add rock bolts that will stabilize the rock face to make sure that as the excavation is proceeding down, the rock face stays stable. Along the front, where there is a substantial amount of soil, the excavation support won't be straight rock, it'll be partly soil, partly rock. So what we'll probably do is design a set of soldier piles that will be drilled into the rock, and that will retain the soil. And then when we get to the rock, then it's going to be an open-faced rock cut with rock bolts as necessary. The last thing I want to touch on is drainage. As the excavation, as you see on rock cuts driving down the highway, you'll see water weeping out of the rock, ice dams forming, that sort of thing. In order to mitigate that, we put drainage in to collect any drainage that may seep through the rock that gets collected down in a drainage system at the lowest level, and then it will be directed out probably to the infiltration systems, which in turn is, you know, will end up into the city storm drain system. That's all I had. If there are any questions.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, what type of rock is it?
It's granite.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything unusual about this site in terms of increased risk situation, or is it typical to this site that you haven't worked with before?
No, it's very typical. It's just important, I've seen these kinds of projects done without any engineering input. And I won't say any in particular, none that I was involved with, but with proper engineering, this can be a very, very safe excavation. And probably, it's going to be a lot more belt and suspender, bells and whistles are going to be put into this earth retention system or rock retention system than you would normally see on a highway, because the consequences of, you know, a rock slope failure are much more significant here than they would be on a highway. So it'll be a lot of rock bolts and dowels that are put in beforehand to make sure it's stable.
Mr. Chairman, the final item we ask for is a special permit. The planning board also granted us a special permit, a special permit site plan review back in April. And in their decision, they went through all the criteria for granting a special permit to the City of Quincy that the community needed to serve by this proposal. This proposal will have an affordable housing component for this city's Affordable Housing Trust. This property is in Business C, it's not in Quincy Center zoning district, so it's not exempt from providing affordable housing. This site is, if you look at the zoning map of the city, this is the last parcel that's in Quincy Center. This is where the Business C zoning district ends. The next parcel on the other side, Parker Street, is, I believe, Residence B. So this is the end of Quincy Center, this parcel. And this is intended to be part of Quincy Center redevelopment to bring new housing into Quincy Center, to help redevelop Quincy Center for the future. The traffic and pedestrian flow and safety was analyzed up and down by the peer review engineer, the city's traffic engineer.
They've peer reviewed and everything.
Everything has been peer reviewed on this project. The adequacy of public utilities, there will water flow tests performed before the site plan review is approved. The neighborhood character for this area. I will be the first to admit that this building does not match houses that are on Parker Street. This building is not in that neighborhood. This is a Quincy Center building, and it's not an unusual building for Quincy Center, particularly considering the large, high-rise residential buildings that are right next door to this property on Granite Street. All of the impacts on the natural environment have been mitigated with the stormwater management plan that was set in place by Mr. Joyce. And the potential fiscal impacts, this is supposed to be a condominium building, so 32 brand-new owner-occupied condominium units is excellent new growth for the City of Quincy, excellent tax revenue growth for the city to help pay for the city services. And so in closing, you know, we believe that this project meets all the criteria for a special permit for multifamily, and also that it absolutely meets all the criteria for granting a variance based on the soil conditions, shape, and depositing of this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Does anyone have one speak in favor? Step forward, name and address.
Mr. Hattigan is distinguished member of the board. His name is Peter O'Connell, and general partner of two of the buildings that bought this site, 125 Granite Street, which is Granite Place, ten-story, 270-unit, and 99 Granite Street is 52 now. And we've watched this project with great interest, obviously, with the amount of investment we have next door. Our principal concern was the blasting. We have closely talked to Maine Drilling and Blasting, and very satisfied. And I can tell you that we removed probably 150,000 yards of granite from Granite Place almost 40 years ago. And I can tell you that we did not have the safeguards and the systems that they have in place. At least the building inspector would know that. But all went well when the building was built. But I can tell you this, I'm impressed with what they're doing. They're putting a monitoring system on the building, and we have no opposition to the development. We think it is part of the downtown, and I think it will be a good addition to the city.
Thanks. Or anyone else want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter here from the DFW. I guess they've been satisfied. It says here, "We agree with you about our some projects and have no comments." There's no add-ons or additions or extracts. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please step forward, state your name and address to record. If anyone else would like to speak, please come up now.
My name is Maria Tarova, and I live right across from where this project is taking place. I want to explain a little bit 20 Parker Street, so it's right across the street. I want to explain a little bit about what happened with Ian's email. He found out that certain people that were fudders were not notified, and I was one of them. I live right across the street. It's beyond me why I never received a letter. I didn't attend the planning board committee. I don't know what was ranging there. The only letters I received have been two letters. One where the meeting was canceled without notice, which I attended, and the one here today. So I feel like I'm very unprepared. In addition to that, I feel like there's other neighbors who have not received notice. Me being the person that tried to cross the street, I have an intense interest in this. I have... currently, I have legal representation, but I still don't feel like I'm ready to go on and digest all of this information. So I have... considering that I live across the street and I wasn't even noticed, I question whether there's other neighbors on the street who also are on the same boat. There are people here who object. These are... if you guys can stand up, all of Parker Street.
They can all speak for themselves, that's fine.
No, they don't stand up so you guys can see them. And some of them will speak, some of them are not going to speak, because not everybody can do public speaking. I just want to also introduce my attorney, Michael Robea. He will be asking us some questions. And I do also want to read an email from us, two emails actually, from us to Jay Dugas, where I was inquiring about this project. And I specifically said that I live across the street. I heard there's something going on. Please let me know what the plan is. I have a response here that says, "I do not have any information regarding this proposal." My follow-up was, "We just found out that the project you was inquiring about earlier is listed under 151 Granite Street, Quincy, Mass. Do you have any further information on this? Some of our neighbors were notified in a letter, and they went to a meeting at the restaurant called Sons of Italy in Forest Street in Quincy on March 18th at 7:00 o'clock. We would have strongly liked to attend, but we were never notified. However, our house is the closest neighboring house next door to this project. Any information you might have on the project and our next steps for the project would be really helpful. We want to make sure we are up to date on what is happening and get notification for the next meeting. We also want to make sure our opinion is heard and vote cast. Again, I'm very disappointed we haven't been part of this. I wonder if there's other neighbors who haven't. But let me speak to what is going on right now and the reasons why I object about the variances that are being asked."
You were notified of this meeting, correct?
I was, yes.
Okay, because you run the list.
Yes. And that is why...
The city didn't hold any other meetings, so it's not up to the city to...
Well, the planning board, and before we started here, he said that there's been a year of meetings where all of these have been discussed. What I would have strongly liked to attend, and I would have liked to have been represented, considering that...
But that's not our job. My job and these guys' jobs are just sit here at this meeting.
Ian's job was that, and he sent you a letter telling you that we request additional time considering this as a part.
This has been going on over a year.
And we have followed up. It's not my job to follow up either, and we follow up.
Not here to argue with you, ma'am, I'm not. I'm just telling you, that was our decision, and we decided that. So you have the floor, please speak.
Okay.
You have seven minutes, by the way.
We are asking for a variance. Variance are supposed to be granted under special and rare circumstances. I do not believe that what they said right now meets those conditions. I heard something about profits, something about it being too expensive considering they're doing the plastic, so they're asking for these variances. Who asked them to build, to pick this lot that is so difficult, that is made of granite rock? I live next door. I do not want... they have their legal right to build whatever they want, but I will not approve of any variances. They need to stick to the law and do what's right. I am also concerned about the water and sewer. I've not had the chance to review what is being done. I'm sure you guys are aware about what's going on with Pepper's Lane, which is a street right across from us. That is a hill that looks identical to our street. The water there in the winter is like a river. What happened with the High Point condominium and the other... there's another name for the new development that's there, Tadwon Bay, definitely impacted them. There's water going through that street that is disrupting the flooring, and the neighbors are very upset, they're getting flooded. I don't know how those neighbors are being remedied. I don't want the same, to see the same thing happen to my street. It is very similar to those two streets. Has a study been done to compare them? In addition, I'm concerned about the traffic. The hill is very steep. There would be adding more parking and more people going through the area. There's already been two accidents in the last month or so. Concerned about overcrowding, but that's a different story. Concerned about the electric system in Quincy. There's been electrical fires in our street before. The retirement housing next door, they are also overpopulated. They have, let's say, 600 people living there. If you look up, the electric wires are so thick and not safe. I do not want to add to the problem. And I'm concerned about the blasting. I haven't been convinced that I would be protected as a next-door neighbor from any hardship I might encounter from the blasting. I know there's other neighbors that are not here today that intend to appeal it. There is a case of a woman who has lived on the street forever and is now looking to move because she's heard about this project. She's not here today, but I would like to have her speak to me. I have an attorney, I want to inform her about what her legal rights are. And we need to gather again and have another hearing. I just want to let the board know that I intend to appeal this. What if the decision is yes, whether it's now or whether it's after we have more time? I think that if you grant continuance now, you have a better chance at it not being overturned at appeals, because then we would have had enough time to learn about our rights and understand what's going on. If you say yes right now, you will hear from my attorney, and I will be appealing. I think there's other neighbors that also want to see.
Thank you. Next.
My name's Krista Lester. I live at 18 Parker Street. I'd like to appeal to the sympathies of the board for a moment because I lost my husband in 2014, and this is the first meeting that I've been cognitively able to attend because I've been so restricted for two years. So I also would like to request more time to think about this idea. I also want to share with you that I left my building just about two weeks ago, walked down Parker Street and saw a person lying unconscious in the middle of the street with two cars and people gathered around because somebody had hit a pedestrian right at the bottom of our street. This is not the first time this has happened. It's not the second time I've seen this happen. It's not the third time I have seen this happen in the eight years I have lived at 18 Parker Street. I am terrified of the thought of that 19 new parking spaces that have to enter going up Parker Street. Also, that hill in the wintertime is not wide enough for more than one car. When the snow is plowed, there is one lane of traffic, and I pray that there's not going to be a car coming down toward me when I'm going up that hill, because it is icy and it is dangerous. it is dangerous. I'm also concerned about the blasting and about being notified about the dates of the blasting, because I have a dog that could very easily die as a result of blasting noises and tremors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lester. Anyone else? Please run aside.
Good evening, board members, my name's George Lee, I'm at thirty-nine Parker Street. I'm here to oppose the project. I've lived at Parker Street since two thousand and four. In two thousand and five, there was a blasting project, two houses from me, there's five houses now. It was a side show. They blasted for five weeks, they, they skipped the series of warning, the whistles, they didn't have a police detail, they didn't have a fire detail. I called for the, the police department, I called for the fire department. The city was not involved in this after they stamped the okay. I'm opposing this project for a number of reasons. That's the major reason. Second of all, I've lived there for eleven years, twelve years, and the traffic, pedestrian and car going up and down Granite Street is crazy. It's just, how are they gonna stop all pedestrian and car traffic during the blasting time? And that's twice a day. And maybe they know something I know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Kevin Waiso, I live in sixteen Parker Street, just across the street from where this project's gonna be. I oppose to, to this project because of, you know, all the reasons that the other folks have spoken. And then also, one major element is that I don't think the neighbors are well notified. The first time we got the letter, the planning get postponed, every time get postponed, people have a hard time following up, you know, when this meeting will eventually, you know, happen. So, and then, and then I think this is a bad idea. With all the rocks and, you know, barely a two-family, you're gonna blast everything out, build, build a high-rise there, the traffic is really bad, you know, cars going down from the slope, and with all the people, also from, from outside going to, to the two plaza, this is not the ideal location to, to build a thirty-unit apartment. And then that's a black spot for, for all the accidents that happen there. And, and I was looking, before this meeting, I was looking at all the meeting minutes, I've seen, seen, you know, people trying to, you know, get in fire, rebuild a house, you know, from three-bedroom to a five-bedroom, get rejected, one not, I don't know the reason, but this shouldn't, yeah, shouldn't be the case. You can't, I don't see, see this happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kevin O'Malley, I live at forty-two Costa Street. I'm concerned about the project here. When you drop it down Parker Street, you don't have a clear sightline, don't you, or anything? And, you know, it's one thing in the, in the good weather, the good weather is, you know, somebody's crossing, bad weather, it's the wintertime, I believe we have a real public safety issue here. You're coming down the hill, sometimes I'm doing slowly from the top, with snow on the ground, and you're going downhill, you start out downhill, you're not ending up downhill that way, you're coming down at an angle off, it's not, it's a tough spot. I'm concerned with this, you know, these many people coming into a multi-unit building like this. You have to be really careful, it's a real concern. Additionally, I'm very concerned about blasting the ledge, it's a close proximity to my house, who ran a block foundation, is during people in Quincy, and therefore, some of them, I'm concerned.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Thank you. Anyone else? Please run aside.
How you doing, John Rutherford, sixty-two Grandwall Road, Quincy, Mass? I actually videotaped the planning meeting, so if anyone wants to watch that meeting, go to quinseytaxpayers.com or to my YouTube channel, and you can see that meeting. That was the first ever planning meeting I ever went to. It was like a circus that night. Just because the planning board makes a positive recommendation doesn't mean they've made a good recommendation, okay? So, yeah, okay, as a backup, it's a two-party government almost, so let's say if the planning people make a bad decision, you guys are a safety net. And there's no doubt, I have a lot more respect for the zoning board members than I do for the planning board members. It's not even close, okay? Now, one thing we gotta talk about, this property was advertised in the multiple listing of a real estate broker, Tom McFarland, who is the brother of Mike McFarland, was, I believe, one of the people that had the listing, and it was even advertised in the MLS listing that they could do future development here. So they almost made promises to these people, which I don't think you guys can deliver in all good faith. I mean, this is worse than the dumping, no one explained. They were talking about a year ago, using a different method that wasn't gonna make damage to everyone's properties. Now they're gonna use a method that's cheaper, that's gonna cause damage. They're gonna be blasting, they're gonna be trucking rocks away, you know, just, it seems like promises were made before that they could do something, but you guys do not have to give them the variances, okay? Another thing no one is talking about is building on ledge, there's radon gas underneath ledge typically and stuff, it's just not the best thing. So, I mean, there's, you know, to have faith in the city, we have to have faith in the zoning board, the planning board, the city councilors. I'm kinda disappointed, Councilor Kane is not here, there was a city council meeting last night. He should be here, representing the people in Ward Three. And it's time for us as the people to unite and stand together, and just, you know, maybe, it would make sense to maybe continue this matter or withdraw this without prejudice tonight. So, to pass this tonight, it would be one of the worst things I've ever seen in my life. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here? Please run aside. Call it party here and close. You know, they take buildings downtown in the middle of districts and wallow in ninety-foot holes, that's what they do. That's what people do today, and they do it safely, and they do it nice, and they build nice projects. And anyone that's been in construction business knows the safeties that are taken today, that are probably, a lot of the times cost prohibitive to building, even downtown block. And I've been in construction business my whole life, and it's gotten so safe out there, it's really, it's bizarre what contractors have to do. So, and I know what these blasting people have to go through, and, and really, the serious things that they have to do. And I'm not afraid of that at all, I just, I'm glad that we have those laws to protect them today. And this building's been seen, and this project, oversighted by all independent parties, nothing to do with us, the planning board, anything. Independent parties that look for errors in their application, and none have been found yet, so. This has been going on a long time. I know you live there, you're worried, someone talks blasting and freaks you out, and that's fine, and people have a right to an appeal, they have a right to appeal anything in this world, but what went on and what this project was designed in the beginning to what it is now, for that hunk of land, and what has to be done, I'm gonna be voting in favor. I think it's a good project, I think it's the end of the city, it's Granite Street, and it's a, it's a major throughway, and that's what we gotta stop building in downtown Quincy. We gotta stop building big buildings, not little buildings, so I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I feel you're in favor.
Likewise in favor.
Mr. Jim, I have a question for Mr. Harrow.
Sure.
Harrow, could you speak to the issue of the notice that we brought up by the people signing?
This, when this case was first filed, we certified a Butters list last year. That was the list that was used for the planning board notices that went out. We went out of our way and got a newer Butters list just a few weeks ago, or a month ago, six weeks ago, for this here. We didn't use the same Butters list that we had for the planning board because it was a year old at that point, so we went and got a second certified Butters list to make sure we had a current certified list for this board. So when this notice went out, it was the correct people for anybody who's almost, you know, changed hands every year since you filed the planning board application. The, the meeting that took place at the Sons of Italy, that was Councilor Hawthorne's neighbor. He scheduled that meeting, we gathered at the Sons of Italy, and we went to that meeting and presented the plans to the neighbor that night. That, that wasn't a planning board meeting. The planning board meeting happened later. The first planning board meeting was until May, June, of last March.
And maybe portion of your mind that the death requirement is not met, the requirements or notice for this year?
Absolutely none. We're, we're required to give notice to everybody on the certified Butters list within a three-hundred-foot radius, and we got that list from the assesses office, and that's what was used by your clerk to send notices to the neighbors.
Thank you. You're voting in favor.
I need to reply to that now.
Come here, come here. A party here and close. You have a right to do later what you'd like. You have a comment? He will on his side. You have a comment?
I mean, I think that the least of my worries is the blasting. I think that they're fully vetted, just like you said, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be voting in favor.
My question was, how many please? Could a couple of that?
One.
Is it very well attended?
Yeah, it was a full room. Yeah, and, and the, the original building that was proposed on this site was a, was a fifty-two-unit building. And so if you can imagine that footprint, the footprint was exactly the same, except it was fifty-two units, and the building went all the way back to within ten to fifteen feet of the rear property line. And so it was reduced from fifty-two units to forty-two units, and then reduced to thirty-two. And that was one of the reasons why it took so long at the planning board. The other reason, the other major change that was made to it was that in the original application, there was a driveway that ran up this side of the building. So there wasn't an entrance on the front of the building. This, you came in a driveway here that turned into the first-floor garage, and the driveway raised up in elevation toward the back of the site, and you turned into the second-floor garage, and all the access was off this driveway. But that building with the driveway on the side, because this is the worst part of the ledge here, that was estimated to be twenty-nine thousand cubic yards of material would have to come out for that design, as opposed to this one, which is eleven thousand cubic yards. So we've, we cut the amount of blasting down by a third from where we originally started, because we did, we did hear from the neighbors at that meeting, that they were very concerned about blasting, and they had serious concerns about noise in their homes.
Mr. Chairman, the matter number sixteen dash zero four two, seven dash fifteen Parker Street LLC, Antoine Keller, manager for a special permit and variance, he's a residential building on a premises numbered one fifty-one Granite Street, also known as thirteen dash thirteen, sorry, seventeen dash thirteen, fifteen dash twenty-one. Parker Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance and grant the special permit.
Second? On the motion, seeing none or in favor? Aye. Close.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to the chair.
Second? Second. On the motion, seeing none or in favor? Thank you, everybody.